Okay, we have had our executive session. We've moved now back to the open session for our county commissioner meeting. We've relocated to the courtroom. At this time, I would like to introduce Mr. James Neeld. He's from Kansas City, an attorney at law. And we've retained him to help represent us in negotiating with NextEra. We've kind of laid out some how it's going to, what we're thinking, and we've had our visits. I think we're all on the same page. Number one, we're both, our primary objective is the health, safety, and welfare of Neimahaw County. Pure and simple. It's not monetary. We'll overlook money part of it, is not a problem. If, but like I said, we cannot overlook your health and safety and welfare of you and, and as this goes on for 30 years, our grandkids, our kids, and our great-grandkids. Okay? So at this time, I think we can either, if you want to address.
Sure.
Make a slight adjustment, if you can, and then we'll go into having Galen and Doug present their situation. We can go right into that. I don't think, and of course, this is an open meeting. You may ask questions. We want to hold them to a limit, kinda, but at the same time, we don't want to belidger a fact, but at the same time, we got, we need to know the issues. And this man here needs to know the issues because he's the one that's going to be talking, and he's willing to be here for a while, and so we'll go from there.
Good morning. Nice to meet everybody. So this is so familiar to me. I grew up in a small town in Oklahoma.
Hey Dennis, could you use a microphone or?
Sure. How about I stand up? I don't like microphones. So can everybody hear me? Yeah, so this is very familiar to me. I grew up in a small town in Oklahoma. I was a rancher, my grandfather, so this is very familiar to me, being around everybody. So thank you. I'm very humbled to be engaged by the county. It's actually my privilege to represent the county and the commissioners. So first off, thank you. My firm is engaged, so not me individually. So you have more than just me, which is a good thing. My background is in real estate development and representing developers. I'm typically on the other side of this discussion. I do do energy projects, and I have three energy projects pending right now that involve electricity in some manner, many of which are much larger than this one. I don't say that in an egotistical way. I simply say that in a manner to give you the confidence that I at least know the process and the manner in which this will be negotiated. So the main thing we have to do at this point, we've been engaged a week, let's begin with that, so I'm only a week on the job. The process is the most important thing, is to start a process and see that process to completion. The process, and this is rather basic right now, and it will refine and become more detailed a bit later, is number one, to have an initial call with the developer, NextEra. That call is scheduled for tomorrow. The county attorney, mayor, will more than likely participate in that, and the county attorney and I will be working together on your behalf. From that call, we will start working through what I will call a term sheet. If you buy a business or anything of that nature, typically you want to agree on the big points before you document the overall contract. That seems to make logical sense. Instead of us going directly to a bunch of documents, we make sure we're in agreement on the big picture items. Although this is a small list of things I'll be discussing tomorrow, it's certainly not exhaustive, so don't think that just because I don't say something doesn't mean that we're not going to discuss it. The main concerns revolve around the health, safety, and welfare of the county and the citizens. So we begin with items such as, what route are you using to bring your equipment through the county? Appointing an expert to determine the appropriate route and whether or not it's safe. Having appropriate insurance in place in case that there's an accident or a claim that would be made based upon that route. Setting up construction staging areas, either on private land, if they can specifically negotiate it, or on county land. And then having a process in place by which they can coordinate with a county representative for routes, or particularly if they're out of their route. The idea is to make sure they're on a route that's safe, and that's approved by the county, and that's overseen by somebody at the county. And then, of course, if something bad happens, then a claim can be made by an appropriate process, and they have appropriate insurance to cover that claim. That kind of covers getting the stuff into the county, right? The second is what I'll call the construction phase. When they build it, do they have appropriate insurance such that if they hurt somebody while they build it, right, that they, a claim can be made and there's insurance to cover that claim? Also related to construction would be some form of decommissioning methodology, and the assurance that money is around in order to both maintain the improvements and then decommission the improvements once they've expended their life or they want to take them down. Once again, the assurance here is to try to make sure they are maintained and run as safely as possible, and if something bad happens, there is a claims process by which the citizens of the county can make their claim to the appropriate person. The decommissioning phase is when, at the end of the life of the project or the termination. That would involve an assurance that they have enough money to take stuff down and get it out of your county. It's just not there forever. Now, there will be a lot more items than that. My deliverable to the commissioners is a term sheet with the basic business terms, as I've outlined, including other terms. I will present that to the commissioners. I'm sure we'll present that initially in an executive session to discuss it. It may be that I just missed the mark on something, and I need to go back before it can be formally presented to the citizens. Once the commissioners believe that's in good form, it'll be presented to the citizens, and we'll, I'm sure, have a meeting where we can openly discuss it, and I'll be here, and everyone can tell me what a poor job I did, or what a good job I did. Once we go through that process, then if we make changes, I will try to implement those changes, and then we will then reduce that agreement to contracts and binding agreements. Once again, that is a process I proposed to the commissioners, and that's certainly the process I would propose to this group, and we begin that process tomorrow. Are there any questions on the process? Thank you.
Tim, Gary, do you have any comments?
I'd just welcome James aboard.
Thank you.
I think he's got his ducks in a row, and he'll help us tremendously.
Just general housekeeping. Our own county attorney would love to be here, however, he had another engagement that he couldn't attend, so typically he would have been here.
And he will be informed.
He will be.
He will be updated and be aboard, and like I said, he will work hand in hand, Mr. Neeld, because, number one, if we ever have any issues down the road, Brad is the one that's going to have to defend us, and he needs to be, know the situation and go from there. If anyone has any general questions at this time, we can go to that, or we can turn it over to Galen and Doug. Galen Ackerman, Doug Werkenberger. You know, and we can go ahead with our, the process and see what, where it leads us to. But if anyone has any direct questions before we get into any of that, we welcome them at this time. Not Galen, I think we'll turn.
Do you have a question?
Sure.
I'm Galen Mayhuis. Question is, for those that are not wanting to participate, I know at one time there was a resolution that had setbacks against non-participating members. How will they address that for setbacks for those that do not?
This is something that we're going to have, that'll be in part of the negotiation. All we can, all we can determine, and you know, and it's kind of like Mr. Neeld said, you know, if you're, you need less people involved with negotiating, the better, you know, you don't have as much input. He needs to know the facts, and that's what I hope he's going to gain from here, what our feelings are. He understands some of that. We've already been through that, and like I said, one of my big deals is non-participating landowners. You know, I mean, it's pure and simple, just because dad sold you three acres, you know, and lets you build a house, don't mean he's not going to put a windmill right outside your window. And this is one part of mine. It goes back to, again, the health, safety, and welfare. It's not a monetary deal. If we happen to lose a windmill, so be it. If we, whatever happens is what's going to have to be our decision once James and they get done with their negotiation, and they come to us with their term sheets and give us some direction. Right now, we have no way of knowing where we're going to go, what we're going to go. We know what we want, or we want what we feel like we want, but we have to have people that's more knowledgeable than the three of us helping us with this project, and therefore we hope his firm will guide us in that. Plus, we have a lot of good concerned citizens out here. Some are for, some are against, you know, or some are just really worried about what's our county going to do in 15 years? You know, is my grandson going to be able to come to Neimahaw County and build a house if he wants to? You know, I mean, there's just a lot of issues, and we're all informed of that. And like I said, we've got, hopefully you'll put your faith in us, and we do the best we can, but we're, we're going to negotiate, try and negotiate the best deal for, number one, the participating landowner, the non-participating landowner, you know, and then the towns that are surrounded by these wind farms. If it's determined that, you know, whatever's good for Neimahaw County is going to be what we're going to have to go with. Kind of sidestep true, but.
I think that's the number one thing, though.
Right, the reason I asked that, because I did not hear your attorney address that, that's one of the reasons.
Well, we really don't have a game plan yet, you know, but that is one of the topics. We'll be in setbacks because, and I think in the next couple of weeks, we're going to develop a game plan, and then we're going to bring it out here, and we're going to dissect it right here again, see what everybody thinks.
You know, and we're hoping that NextEra and their people are going to work with us, you know. I don't know where the point is of no return, but still, you know, we have to work together and try and keep an open communication and get it to where it's beneficial for everyone here involved. Because, you know, increasing taxes is not good for our people. They want less taxes. I got a lot of people that want less taxes. This would help in that situation to some extent. To what extent, we don't know yet. That's part of his negotiation. But at the same time, that's, you know, it's going to benefit all the people in all Neimahaw County, and this affects all Neimahaw County. It don't just affect, you know, the people in the southern part of the county or the northern part of the county, it's all of Neimahaw County. We're all involved in this, and we need to learn to respect each other's rights. If somebody has a strong feeling for it or against it, we need to respect their right and listen to it, and see what it says, and then we can weigh our decisions from there. The main thing we don't want to do is cut off the dialogue. Okay? Galen? You and Doug got a?
Well, I think we're just, we're slumming at the same time. I don't really have a lot to add at this stage. I think as long as everybody understands that process, I, let me clarify, Mr. Neeld and Dennis, the public input process, what does that look like? How does this group or anyone in the county that has something to say, how do they best deliver their thoughts?
Well, number one, you've done a good job of so far. Yeah, so from my perspective, it needs to go through the commissioners. Everybody calling me at my office probably isn't the best idea, right?
Thanks.
But flowing it through the commissioners' offices, the best way to get it to me. And my goal, and especially going back to the setbacks, is our first term sheet will have the setback distance on it, that they are proposing and that we're trying to negotiate. Any comments you have early on, get it to the commissioners. I bet the, the best time where you will have the most meaningful information as far as the business terms will be once we get this term sheet, and that's the term I'm using, is going to be a deal point sheet. And that's where you can really hash through it. If the setback's not where you want it, you need to come back at either that public hearing or prior and give the commissioners your feedback. Then at some point, the commissioners have to make a decision, right? They take all the input and they make a decision. So from my perspective, pre-term sheet, goes to the commissioners. Post-term sheet, I think it's, we're going to hit the big points, but commenting on that term sheet to your commissioners after that would be very meaningful, and participating in the public debate. This is why we do this, right? If I'm going to represent the commission in the county, your feedback is not only desired, it's, I must have it. Otherwise, we're going to cut this deal, and everyone's going to be mad, yet no one participated in it, right? Does that answer your question?
I think so. Thank you.
And that is one of the valuable parts that we have here, and I appreciate having you all here again today, because we've been through a lot of decisions in my term on the commission, which is, I'm the shortest term of all of the commissioners, but to me, it's gratifying to know that we've got people out here in Neimahaw County that are worried, that want to present their case and say, listen, here's what we need to do, help us in this. It gives us some guidance, helps us make our decisions versus we've had deals where, that we thought was a pretty big deal for Neimahaw County, and maybe two or three people spoke up, or maybe none. Absolutely gives us no direction whatsoever, and so therefore, I thank each and every one of you for taking time from your business and your farms and coming here today to help give us some guidance. It's gratifying to me. I appreciate your presence. Yes, sir?
How long do you expect this process to take? Like six months or a year? Do you have a timetable set?
Yeah, so, and I'll stand up again, just so everyone can hear me. We don't know yet. I suspect that the developer is on some timeline that they have to meet in order for their financing, or there's some economic force here driving their timeline. That's not, that's not necessarily our timeline. My impression from the information I have is they would like to have this wrapped up in February. My personal opinion is I believe that is a bit aggressive in light of the process that I outlined. So my impression is if they want February, you know, you're probably looking at two months after that. Now, once again, the term sheet may come back and is presented, and you know, we only have one or two things we're really working through, it may close up a bit quicker on that. Right now, their timeline's February. My best guess is probably a couple of months after that, to answer your question directly.
Dennis?
One last question. So just to clarify for everyone, Mr. Neeld is working on the pilot agreement for the NextEra Soldier Creek project. That is not, that doesn't, many in the room here have been approached by Inverge, and perhaps NextEra, but by Inverge for sure. So just don't be confused that this is not going to address anything with the other company's plans. This is simply going to deal with the Soldier Creek project, am I correct?
With NextEra.
With NextEra, yes. And that could either be, Mark, can you help me here, either Boulevard Associates or Soldier Creek Wind? That's the two leasing entities that have leased land in this county by record today. Is that right? Okay. And Doug, I'm sure has.
Well, the, and the other thing is, is I don't know how one's going to affect the Once we come to an agreement with NextEra, it may give Inverge a hint to where we're headed. You know, I don't know. We don't know how that works, and it may, may and may not. I don't know. That part is there. We may look into, or we are looking into, some ways of protecting our more populated areas of Neimahaw County from this project, or from any project as far as that goes. We're not sure where we can go with that just yet. And if anybody comes across any good information on that, you know, welcome to. And we've been, we've got plenty of more information, a little more to. Doug, you had your hint, no?
Oh.
My turn?
If I, if I can address the bench. This is a really nice graphic that my daughters were able to help me with. And we can get copies for these for everybody if they're interested, but this is, going back to the setback question, is what I think the majority of us are probably the most interested in. If, if something like this is going to proceed through our county, you know, we have to learn to get along a little bit, and we've got neighbors that are definitely for this and against, and of course, some of those of us that did not participate. So I, I am coming at this, and this is my own piece, but coming at it is a non-participating landowner who has recently, I guess backing up a couple, couple steps here, built a home in Neimahaw County roughly 20 years ago, and had lived there, and then a wind farm went in north of our home roughly eight years ago? Is that right? Somewhere, seven, eight years ago. And so I am somewhat knowledgeable to what it's like to live close to a wind farm. We live, we live in a one mile, actually, it's like 1.17 miles south of the existing, the closest existing wind turbine to our house. These are somewhat less aggressive, I'm told, than what the new ones are. They're definitely smaller, and whether that's going to be less noise, more noise, will be yet to be seen. But I did a quick census of our neighborhood over the weekend, did a little, little bit of homework, and went around and spoke with every one of the families that were in the same location that I am, in the same, the closest people to the existing wind farm. And we unanimously were against the idea of having them any closer than what they are, I mean, without, without, you know, closing a project, but of course, none of us would like, I guess what the short of it is, none of us would like to see them any closer than a mile. Now, knowing that in Neimahaw County that that's probably not going to go over so well with the people who do want the projects to come in, what I have put together here is just a quick little proposal going over maybe something to keep into consideration, and it just shows us just a simple little circle of a half-mile radius around a home, and a non-participate, what I'm talking about here is a non-participating home, and then another circle at a three-quarters of a mile, or yeah, three-quarters of a mile distance from that home, and one a mile distance from that home. And as what I've spoke at previous meetings about was finding some way that the non-participating landowner can have a voice in this. Because if the person across the road from me comes and signs up, there's really no reason for NextEra to have to come and have a conversation with me regarding compensation for the loss of value of my property, the health concerns of the noise, several of the aspects that my family's going to be subject to because of these wind turbines, when the landowner in turn is maybe living in Kansas City, you know, or Missouri, or someplace far removed from where this is all going to be taking place. So what I've got here, and you guys can put in the numbers, I mean, there's some number there during your negotiations, what I'm, what I'm showing is an option that we could propose would be that we establish our setback to whereas anybody within that, say, that half-mile range, if they're going to put a turbine closer to us than, than that number, that they have to come negotiate with that non-participating landowner. And then knowing that we're not going to be real well participating, you know, they're not going to be able to negotiate with everybody within a mile, to actually make those numbers a hard number for, for the non-participating guy. So in this essence, instance, anything outside of the half-mile to three-quarters of a mile, there would be a certain number that they've, that they would know, that the wind energy would know, that then when they're, when they're establishing where they're going to put their wind turbines, that they would know how many houses there are within that three-quarters of a mile distance. And say that number's $3,000 a year, they would know that that turbine's going to cost them that amount, or 5,000, or whatever that number might be. And then, of course, anything outside of that, between that and the mile range would be less, and then preferably, for all of those of us who would be non-participating, the mile would, would then come into play after that. Outside of that, it would be the participating landowner's job to establish that. That's just kind of a little, something to put in your guys' ideas section while you're, maybe while you're negotiating this with the gentleman from NextEra to see that. And then, so that kind of goes over the, carries our setbacks, and definitely the point that we're most concerned about is what it's going to do to the county as far as, and we've all voiced this, as far as development, you know, I have young children. My mom and dad were fortunate enough to get a few of us to move back into the area and build houses around mom and dad, and we enjoy living in the country, and we are very grateful for that. And at some point, you know, it'd be nice to have children and grandchildren also in that, in that same area, and we, we like it that you take all this into consideration for that. Because, you know, we're looking at, in that, in the case that they build a home, or they put a turbine even in that three-quarters of a mile from our house, that limits future, so then when my son moves back and builds a house that's actually going to be on the quarter of our, our half-section, is he going to be then, you know, 1,400 feet from that same turbine? So there's going to be, you know, I've got my own little area that I'd like to build, you know, have built up out around us as well, and I think those are all things that hopefully you guys are taking into consideration. Address that, but.
Very well said, Doug. And of course, one, there's questions we don't have any answer to. We assume loss of valuation is going to be a given. We're not, you know, you have mixed feelings on that both ways, but it's definitely something that could affect us all, you know, but, and Mary, we can, we could probably go to our appraisers, and she could give us a little bit of an idea of how, how the sale of a house like Doug's would affect the valuation of that. Is there any chance that?
It's going to be really hard to tell because you don't know from year to year what your market does on homes. Neimahaw County has been very fortunate compared to other counties. Our market value has stayed very, very well. I've done data collecting in Topeka, to give you an example, and our homes up here, a lot of them are appraised higher than Topeka homes are because maybe the same home is in not quite as good of an area in Topeka. So, you know, you have different reasons why it could go up or go down. You're, like Dennis says, we don't know if the valuation will go up or go down because we don't know what the market's going to do from year to year. It's going to be, like Doug said, his kids come back. It's going to be, like Doug said, his kids come back, maybe he doesn't build, but he buys. So if he would turn around and buy your house, and I'm just going to use $200,000, and I have it appraised at 200,000, but he gives 300,000 for whatever reason, that means your market could be increasing, but if the value, when he only pays 100,000, then it would be decreasing. So it's going to depend upon who comes back, what, what the scenario is. I mean, I've seen it drop, I've seen it go up since I've been here, and I've been here just short of 32 years. So.
If I had to do over again, now that's the one thing, that's one of that mark, that point that I wanted to make, is if I had to do over again, and I knew that we were going to be fighting this, this battle, I mean, well, first of all, I'm on the south side of my property. So then, you know, anybody, if I, if I were going to do this, I'd be way better off to have been in the center of, center of my property, and I would have been able to establish more of a setback by my own property instead of, instead of that as well. So I think there's, there's those of us, and again, all of those, many of the people that I've talked to this weekend are actually here today in, in supporting this, and, and many of us would, would have said the same thing. If we, if I, I would have, I can say certainly that I would have not increased, in, in, three years ago, I had it on to my house, I made a significant addition to my house. And knowing this right as we are right now, I would not have done that until there was some certainty into what was going to happen, and if I knew there was going, there was going to be one close. Then I could actually place my house someplace other than where it would be close to that. And what we're doing here is we're asking you guys to protect us from the people that are replacing those things, those turbines close to our homes. I mean, I, I want the people that are putting the turbines in to be able to put them in around their homes as well. And I think that's what my proposal does, is at least somewhat give some compensation, forced compensation, a voice to those of us who have homes that aren't participating. I think that's what.
Being a mile away or a little older, what, what do you notice about the wind?
Well, I was talking, Mark and I were talking about that earlier, but I think, I would say, for me, the lights are about the worst problem. As a, at a mile, and that, and that's what's kind of, at a mile, honestly, we don't hear them a lot unless they've got one. We notice we've got one now that's starting to make a, well, they, I don't know, it's Mary going out, or what have you got going, but they, one of them is making a lot more noise now. From mom and dad's house, which they're, they're about, they're just over a half-mile, between a half and three-quarters of a mile. And what we notice from our houses, if it's just you, if I just go outside, I get done mowing the yard and sitting out on the back patio, you hear them. I mean, there's, there are just a constant roar, but it's not so annoying that you can't carry on a conversation. You know, like if somebody's out there talking to you, you don't notice. But that would be somewhat annoying. And, you know, I'm a little bit, those were there when I had it on to my house, so you know, I could say, and, and we don't necessarily like looking at them, but they are kind of a novelty. I mean, they're, you know, you kind of look out your window and you look at the crazy things, but I'm, I'm okay with looking at them a mile away.
For 60 seconds.
Yeah, well, he's, he's a lot closer.
But this is 24 hours a day.
Yeah.
65, no deer.
Yeah, it just keeps going. That's, he's, he's a little bit different case because he can hear them a lot more from his house, but.
You're also south, or south of the tower.
Exactly. Which is another thing, and another point that I keep making too, is that I am south of the tower, and the wind is predominantly out of the south, of course, the southwest, and it's, it's actually moving all of that away from you, even though we can still hear them when the wind's out the south. And then it goes back to the same, and I have some of the other guys that we've talked to have said the same thing, that live in the same, it's funny how, if the wind's blowing very hard, the wind noise offsets the noise of the turbine, so you actually don't really hear them. It's kind of that same, it's, there's kind of a, I guess, an unsweet spot in there where the wind's not blowing quite hard enough to where the wind noise is heard, and then you can really hear the turbines. But, but again, it's just, it's just not a place, I'm okay, like I say, I had it on to my house with them a mile away. I wouldn't have made that same decision if they were a quarter, or maybe even a half-mile away. I would have, I would have not, that would have been an easy decision for me to not place my house there, I would have been someplace else.
Thank you, Doug.
Dennis, one thing, kind of following along, Doug, I do a lot of dirt work around house, new houses in the Sibetha area, and I've got three people that have said, that have talked to me about building, that have said they will not until they find out what's going to happen on the wind towers. So that's going to affect our, our Sibetha area, A H R S, Edelman's, I mean, that has an unseen implication economically, other than just our taxes. And they'll, and they'll pay taxes from day one.
And you're talking short-term, seeing what I mentioned earlier was long-term.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, we went to the tax abatement program to encourage people to come back and help fill our industries with, with employees.
Right.
We've got, we've got industry here in Seneca and Sibetha that are taking bans to Topeka to get people to bring them back here to work. And, you know, we would like to have enough housing here for it, but, so this is definitely an issue, and it's something we need to be thinking about daily. You know, I, I agree 100% on, on that, but I had a, I ran into a, I'd say a significant landowner in Neimahaw County, down in Manhattan, Saturday, and we sat and had coffee and talked, and he says, well, you know, I went out, I, I sat right amidst three of them, and I didn't hear a thing. Well, you know, I told him, I said, do not base, you know, he hadn't signed a contract yet, and he's, he's trying to determine, like many of you in here, should we sign a contract or shouldn't we? You know, what are the terms of these contracts? And I don't know if Mr. Neal can help us some on that, if, if some of our people that are, the, the contracts that participating people are being asked to sign, are they legitimate? I know that you can take your contract to a lawyer, if my understanding, and have it reviewed, but when you talk about 90 years, and my opinion to him, and I told him, I said, before I sign, I tell you what, you need to be attending some of these meetings that we're having, get some knowledge. Don't just sign your name away because they're going to give you $20 an acre, or $30,000 a year, or whatever it is, I don't have any idea. But whatever it is, you need to be understanding what it can do, because, you know, you've got grandkids, great-grandkids, and, and people scattered all over the county, and you need to protect them as well as what you've got. So, yes, sir, Doug.
I hate public speaking, but I'm going to choke through this. I'm a transplant to Neimahaw County. My wife grew up here, I did not, we moved here from Oklahoma City. She had a job opportunity with, she had a job opportunity within the state to work at K-Dog. She lobbied for that job to work out of the Seneca office here, so that we can move here. And I could pretty surely say that if I sat amongst the wind turbines over Marshall County Saturday morning, we would not have moved to this county if that was what we were moving to. And there's a lot of people that feel that way, and I think businesses that are already here have to consider that, on how do we attract people to this area? Because it's a challenge already.
That's a very good point. And the thing that I've brought up before, you know, is, is Next Era may come in, offer us 15, 20 jobs, I don't know, and from my investigating of Flatwater, and maybe use up, no better than I, but the people that are working there are coming in out of Omaha. They're not local people anymore. Now granted, they may have 15, 20 people they're going to employ, but why do we want to lose industries that's got 40, 50, 60 employees on the payroll right now? We have to look at that very closely, and we don't want to do anything to jeopardize our position, because Neimahaw County has got a good reputation, not only for one employee's good work ethic. You know, we've got a lot of things going positive for Neimahaw County, we don't want to take that away from us, just because of a monetary, possible monetary gain. So that's part of my feeling on, on the situation.
Dennis, how?
Yeah, Gil?
I want to touch base on when Doug was talking about the landowners he surveyed, I believe the closest of those that you surveyed by the East Street turbines would be about nine-tenths of a mile?
Right.
And then, and the rest are more than that. So all those people, eight years of turbines, and several turbine leaseholders in that group, that's about roughly a mile away. Nobody's closer than eight tenths, except Linda and Phil. And there are six tenths and seven tenths. Just, I want to give you numbers so you kind of know exactly what that was. Second thing, the evaluation, and Betty, thank you very much for all the work you've done on this, Betty's our county appraiser, if you don't know her. But I think what I've heard isn't so much what's my valuation going to be on my tax statement, that's not the concern that I'm hearing. The concern I'm hearing is, what if I need to sell my house? What is the actual value going to be? And certainly, there's no way to know how that's going to affect valuation, because you have to have comps, where you don't have comps until you have transactions, and it's the transactions, the actual transactions that people are concerned about. And, and one thing that fits that is I've heard a number of landowners that are leasing ground, but not leasing near their own home. And so that tells me that, that even participating landowners realize that turbines near a home don't add value to a home and perhaps detract. I'm just saying that that's what I'm hearing, less, less so about the taxation, and more so about the actual value. And so I have one other question, this relates from Mark. Mark is from Next Era. Mark, I've had at least one or two landowners that are signed up, who've had second thoughts, is there an exit for their lease with your company? And you may not be able to answer that, it may be a legal department question.
Yeah, I, I think that's probably best suited for the legal department to.
How would I get that answer?
Have them, just have them get ahold of myself, and, and I can put them to the right people if they're interested in, in having that discussion.
Okay, thank you.
If you don't mind, I'm Paul Cave, I'm a business owner as well as a landowner, and I just, for, for, for my sake as being a business owner, I, I would go on the record to say that employment is far more important here than satisfying one or two windmills if it's going to keep me from not being able to hire employees to continue to grow a business that I think benefits the community in a way that a windmill might not. I don't care what kind of tax breaks there are, I don't care what kind of employment that's going to be here to build these windmills, I think the long-term interest is for the community that we have, the industrial base that we have, needs to be thought of and protected. That's all I have to say.
Very good, Paul, thank you for being here. But that is, again, you know, we've, we've got such a good reputation for employees, and that's why we have industry in Seneca, and people, you know, from Kansas City, Topeka, Salina, you know, when, when one of our grandkids or, or children, or whoever walks into a place and says, "I'm from Neimahaw County," boom, you're hired. 90% of them will take a chance on them just because of reputation, and that don't happen overnight. You know, it's something that's built into this county, and I think we need to preserve. Now, you know, we've got another obstacle in front of us today, and, and that's what we have to work with. Do we opt, do we want to opt out of change? I don't know. You know, change is going to come no matter what. Most of us didn't fight air conditioning in the house too much, you know, things like that. I mean, there's, there's changes happen through the, through the cycle of our lives. Some's good, some bad, but this is something that affects a lot of people, matter of fact, everyone that lives in Neimahaw County.
On that note, Dennis, do you guys have any sort of plan to make people aware of? You've said that it's going to affect everybody in the county, and from the last few meetings, we've saw, we've seen a footprint that has changed. So a lot of people that I've talked to had no idea that this footprint was potentially expanding outside of the original. And, and I think some of that is, at least in some part, is why you have as many people in this room today as you do, because when I show that, that to people, it, it gets their attention, well, wait a second, that, I thought it was down here. And, and from the gist of it, in talking with different people, the, the ground that is being leased expands way outside of even the enlarged footprint. And, and how is that being addressed? Is that, is this a pre-for-all, or are they contained to this footprint? Do the negotiations that you guys are doing affect anything outside of that original footprint? Or does it pertain to the new footprint, or does it pertain to what's going on within the whole county?
I envision it as, as including a lot of all-related items. I thought about these meetings, and I don't know what's the best way. I think you guys have already started the best way, and that's informing your neighbors, talking to each other, getting more people involved, more people to know what's going on, I think is the best way. We could have a meeting, a public meeting, and there could be 200 people sat there, and how would you handle it? You know, that's my question, you know? We could sit up there and in five minutes give you a nutshell of what's going to happen, how it's going to happen, and, and that's about it. You know, I mean, as far as we know, the nuts and bolts of this thing come through contracts with Next Era. The other parts of the nuts and bolts thing is going to come through what our agreement is with Next Era, with the rules, whatever, however we go about it. So that's the way I feel. I, I mean, I'm not against having a meeting, but I think really word of mouth is way better than, than what you and I could do in a, in a public meeting. Now, if you, if they all feel like that's good, that's good, but I, I just have a problem of how to handle it. You know, I, you know, when Green Line went through, we had the public meeting, and Tim and Garrett can chime in, you know, I mean, it was good, we got a lot of information, but was it helpful information? I don't know. You know, I mean, to the individual landlord. I think you and, and all the people here can provide more information to your neighboring, or your neighbor, or your brother, or whoever, just through a conversation, because number one, they trust you. Okay? When you hear it from somebody else standing up in front of a piece, you know, there's a, there's some of that there, but yet it's not going to be as good as coming from you, and that's my feeling.
But Dennis, the thing is, you guys got a whole lot more information than what we have.
Well, we've got a lot of information, yes, but I, I think you're, you're pretty well at speech.
Dennis, I got a, I got a business I got to keep running, too. I might add to that if I may. Most of us, some of us in here have jobs, or farms, or business that we need to attend to. And speak for myself, I've been to some degree shirking my duties in that regard, just because I think it's important to pay attention. You mentioned the Green Line here a few years back. I wasn't paying attention to that, and I regret not paying attention to it. I didn't pay attention to it because I didn't think it affected me. Someone, as my understanding, has recently purchased the rights to that project, and I think it could potentially affect all of us. I think with regard to, the question as to whether you have a public, pull to public meeting, or two, or three, whatever it is, I feel you as commissioners are in the position to do that. And I, not only do I feel you're in the position, I feel it may be your responsibility, because projects, the magnitude that there's speaking about now potentially affect all of us in the county, all of us residents, not necessarily just landowners.
Very well, thank you, Dwayne. Mark?
And for those that don't know, I'm Mark Trumbauer from Next Era Energy. If I could approach.
Sure.
Great. I think it's better if I can project out here to let people know what's going on. First of all, I appreciate the ability to come out today and at least address the commission and also the, the public. What I'm hearing is, is that you need more information, and just in what you're saying here is that it's hard to get to meetings during the mornings and spend, you know, four or five hours here. I think we need to do a better job of having our own meetings, and having those in the evenings for people that can make those evening meetings, potentially even having a open house or some sort of meeting during the morning or afternoon, so that's accessible for.
sort of meeting during the morning or afternoon so that's accessible for people that work second shift in order to get that information out. I think the other thing that people expect is to have a, a, a boundary of where this is going to happen. And to let you know, we're, we're wrapping up leasing and we're still in that process yet. So, we don't have a boundary yet established. And as soon as we do and we start working on the participating landowners and setbacks, there's a lot of things in the area yet about just how this wind farm's going to come together. So, I'm here today to listen about the, the setbacks. And last week, the commission gave us a, a little bit of homework is to provide a document of a, of a development commitment that we've done with another county. We're working in Reno County right now also, and as a part of that, we've proposed to them And Doug, I know that the innovation that you have put into this, this circular thing, I think that's something that I, I would like to see us work on. I think there's some merit to what you're saying there. We didn't do that here yet. This is a working document with Reno County. We've, we've got to go through a special use permit, zoning permit with Reno County. I imagine that that, some of that innovation with non-participating landowners may come into play there. So, there's going to be some, some spillover, I'm sure. But I appreciate that. I think that's something that, that, that we definitely could go to work on. In Reno County, again, the, the major issue there is setbacks. So, what we've committed to there is that we remain, maintain a 2,000-foot setback from any non-participating landowner. The other issue is that shadow flicker. I don't know if you recognize the fact that there's phenomena that, that goes on with, if I was to put a light behind that fan and that was moving at a slower rate than it would normally, you would get a little bit of this, what they call shadow flicker. That's important that we're not impacting houses with that shadow flicker. So, we've agreed to not impact homes with more than 30 hours per year of shadow flicker. And we can design for that. We also agree that we're not going to exceed noise limits, and that's at the property line. And that will abide by all federal and state regulations. That's fairly easily done because we have to.
And then RPU.
Yeah, yeah. And then also a part of that is that we'll devise a complaint resolution form. And you mentioned that you heard some clunking from a wind turbine. You know, sometimes a turbine has an issue and it's just a one-off issue. They may have a bearing that's going out on it. But you get a complaint that comes out of that and generally, you know, we find out that there's a, a problem with the turbine. And so, we're able to resolve that by going and fixing something and, and that noise goes away. So, what we do is we formalize a complaint resolution process so that if we get a phone call, we have 24 hours or less to, to respond to that phone call and have a written log of the complaint and then also follow up with the complainer or complainant and say, "All right, this is what we've done to..." This is all legal, period, isn't it? Yeah. That we've resolved that issue. And if we fail to resolve that issue, we have to go through binding arbitration or something along that lines in order to, to meet somewhere in the middle. I've worked for this company for 10 years, developed, I'm on my fourth project now. We've had probably, most of our projects we have, the first year, maybe two or three complaints that, that we have to, to follow up on multiple times. They're generally mechanical and equipment-based and usually we're able to resolve them. I say usually, we've always been able to resolve them. So, generally, it's a, it's a, an issue that's popped up because of, of that. I know in most cases, it's somebody that maybe left a door or latch unlatched. Those are really simply just going to shut the door, you know, on the, on the turbine. But those are the kind of things that we see. Regarding the participation agreement, again, that's not in this Reno here, but I, I think that's something that we could come up with and work very closely with the attorney for the county and come up with a way to implement that. If you go to Pratt County, they have a requirement that for any non-participating landowner within a mile of a turbine, or two miles of a turbine, we have to offer a mitigation of screening. And that's voluntary, from our, or not voluntary for them to accept, but we are, it's mandatory for us to extend that offer to them. So, we have to send a letter out to them. If they request that, we have to go out and, and meet with them and install screening for them. So, that's something that Pratt County, we could implement something along that lines. I think that would be something that would work here, that we could see.
What would be screening?
It would be like a hedge or buffer or landscape screening.
How tall are these things?
Well, that's the other problem. I mean, it's, I mean, there's not, you can't get a, you can't get a screen buffer to grow overnight. I mean, you know that, it's going to take a little longer, you know? So, but again, we, we, we agree to pay for that and we give the landlord that, that, that amount of money to pay for that screening. Whatever they want to do with that, install it or whatever they want to do, that's up to them.
What's the setbacks in Pratt, Pratt County?
Uh, setback in Pratt County is 2,500.
How's it going to go 3,000?
I, you know, as far as the setbacks, I, you know, we've worked industry-wide, 1,400 is what we self-impose, okay? So, why don't we go 3,000? I don't remember who asked the question. Who's at 3,000? Generally, that's, that's getting farther than we normally would. When you're talking about attenuation of noise and shadow flicker, 1,500 to 2,000 is more than adequate to attenuate any of the noise issues. And then shadow flicker, we can design around. So...
Mark?
If I could, I want, I'd like to just finish up with the other items here. We also went into document with them that we'll come up with a road maintenance agreement. We'll also, also enter into a decommissioning agreement. And then also the pilot agreement is outlined in here too. So, with that said, this just gives you kind of an idea of what we've done in Reno County. This is a work in progress yet. So, this is like a draft form, but we've committed to this to Reno County. The county can come back and say, you know, we want more or we want less, just depending on where they're at. I would, I would, I would just offer this up as a, as a platform to start the discussion. Sorry. Anyway, all right, I'm ready for questions.
And I will add just one thing. This outline would be something that would be created, when I call up the term sheet... Stand up so people can actually hear me. Who asked about the scope of the project? Yeah. So, listen, everybody wants a lot of answers today, right? Yeah. But we don't have them. That's bottom line. Everyone wants all the information we have. We got a lot of information, maybe not all of us pertinent. But when we put together the term sheet, we'll attach everything we used to consider that term sheet. And then that'll be made available. And it's important that you take it and read it and comment on it. And, by the way, I'm bringing, this is what I've seen in a lot of other projects, a basic outline of the protections they offer to the citizens. And then you're going to get it, you look at it, come in here and talk about it again.
If they want to ask questions, I'll, I'll maybe something available, that's up to the chair.
Mark, I have a question or actually a couple of related questions with regard to your last comments with referencing industry standards. I don't know about anyone else here, but to me, that doesn't carry very much weight. Certainly after listening to Doug talk about his personal experiences and, and his neighbors as well. You talked a little bit about complaints and, and your timetable for addressing those complaints. It seems to me that broader setbacks would address many of those complaints and therefore eliminate, eliminate that aspect for you. And dovetailing into those comments, I'm a little concerned about how many complaints you would get or, or I would hear about based on the contract and, and the limitations that are imposed on signers of the contract through those confidentiality clauses. So, I'm very concerned about whether I get a, a clear picture from you on, on that topic.
Let's start with the latter and then I'll work my way into the, when I say industry standards. All right, so you're talking about a complaint resolution form. Five weeks ago, I took a complaint from a participating landowner here on County Michigan. Okay? Participating landowner who filed it with the county. That's off record, okay? When he filed it with the county, that invoked this process that we had to go through. The county contacted our company. Our company responded. They sent a member of our, usually our O&amp;M staff goes out. I happened to be in the area and I knew the farmer because I worked in the, in the area. I was part of that development team. So, I showed up and I, I talked to the farmer, Tom, his name's Tom, and we outlined what, what needs to happen. And it's got to happen by a date certain and we have to follow up with him after we get the issue resolved. Then we go ahead and file that with the county, the complaint resolution form with the county and participating, participating landowner. And then it's off record then, and that, that way we have that, that on file. We can do the same thing here. It's, it doesn't differentiate between participating or non-participating landowners. If there's an issue, we want to know about it.
Well, that, that's a good point because I, I wonder, one of the first questions that come to my mind is why is he filing a complaint with the county and not going directly to Nextera?
We have the, we have the agreement with the county that, that process is in place with the county and it involves the county zoning administrator. So, that, that process is in place. That could be easily done here or areas could be done where it is a party-to-party and then we have to file a record of that with the county so that they know that happens. There's a lot of different ways we can do that.
Well, forgive me for, for sounding cynical, but, you know, I've heard you and some of your colleagues from Nextera talking about your willingness to work with people and it seemed here, to me, it seems the, the best way to expedite addressing an issue would be pick up the phone and call Nextera and, and get something done about it as opposed to getting caught up in a bureaucracy of any sort.
I don't disagree with you. But many times the county likes to involve, to know that the citizens are being taken care of. If there's a concern, the county wants to know about it. Now, I know there's situations where they, there's people that don't go through that process, okay? They'll call the operations manager and say, "Hey, listen, I think you left the last door open on, on turbine 42." You know, and then Steve goes out and finds the door and it's, yeah, sure, it's left open and it's clanking or it's banging or something along that lines, then it's fixed. I don't know how many instances that happens, okay? I would prefer that to, to work that way. But what the county, I think, needs and I think people here want to know is that there is a process to go through in order to get that resolved as opposed to dealing with just making a phone call to Nextera Energy and hoping it, it goes away. Because I think you got to have that in place to make sure that those people have that comfort level that there is some follow-up and there's some teeth to it also.
Yeah, and that's important. You don't have to make it overly formalistic because you won't, at the end of the day, you want to get your problem fixed, right? But, the issue is, is big company, little guy, right? So, sometimes if the county is part of their zoning condition is based upon them being responsible and fixing things, not that you're always right, some people become just unreasonable. But then there's a hook from the county to go, "Hey, guys, you got to go take care of this and you're putting your, your zoning at risk here." So, that's the stick to make sure they at least go through the process.
Maybe, maybe it'd be easier if, if, if an Nextera ref was contacted with a potential issue, it, it was part of the agreement that it was their obligation to let the county know what they were contacting about.
That's right. And, and that's what I put in my first draft is, "Hey, you guys work it out and get it taken care of officially and then it's the company's responsibility to let us know what happened." And then, of course, the citizens can always call if, if there's some problem there. That seems to be the most sufficient thing. Listen, you all will decide and give the commission guidance on that and they'll tell me which way to go. But that's usually where I begin, gets us out of the middle.
Yeah, I would, I would not disagree with that at all. I would prefer that, that, it would only perk up after the fact that it did resolve, it would perk up the county. But we certainly would keep a log of that, that event and file that, I think, on a, on an annual basis so that the county knows that we are following up the folks that have complaints. Now, I just want to add this, is that there's multiple companies in the, in the area here, okay? We're not the only ones. But I, what I'd like to do is I would like to set the bar at that level so that if, if this other company comes in, I hope that they would want to respond the same way we would, okay? I think we've got a really good track record in, in Kansas. I've worked here in other projects in Kansas and they're very successful. And I know we're going to be able to develop a successful project here and work with people. So, that's the commitment that we bring. So, thank you again.
Population density wise, how, how does this county compare to some of the other counties that you've built in? And I've brought this up before.
Yeah.
Have you had a chance to look at that?
I have not. In fact, I started working on that study last week and, and I should have the initial findings back today or tomorrow. I can follow up with the county commissioners to let them know. I did a similar study in Reno County and presented that to the commissioners. That's a really important way to look at, at how you, you shape up across the state as far as density goes.
The, the next question I had for you was in regards to, you're working with commissioners trying to work out a plan and so forth. Invenergy had an article on MSC News a couple of weeks ago or months ago, whatever it was, that they're talking about a 200 to 300 turbine project in this county. Do they, is that process going to be the same? Or do they just start building turbines?
Correct me if I'm wrong, but of course I know Invenergy has called to introduce themselves and other than that, absolutely all the information we've had.
I think the only thing I would add is it would be my hope from this that we can set some guidance for this type of industry in this county. That way it's not, it's a known commodity, much more than a negotiated event each time a project comes through.
Would, would Invenergy have to sign a pilot agreement, decommissioning and a road and bridge agreement before they started with the county?
I, I will say I would like to think that would be the process, but right now, there's not, the county doesn't have on, and, and it's not just this county, the vast majority of counties didn't contemplate wind farms when they put their zoning ordinances or, I know we don't have zoning ordinance, but other protective ordinances in place. So, very few counties have that. From this process, we hope to establish that and then they would be subject to that ordinance going forward. Now, I'm certainly not trying to bind the commission with that. That'll come out in the stuff to be negotiated, but the idea is to not do this every time.
Dennis, another, just another question that kind of concerns me as working with people building. You're, you're talking setbacks and, you know, for me personally, the farther the better. But setbacks from what? You know, in, in our area over there, you, you've got a number of places where the house has been torn down. You've still got buildings, you've got windbreaks. Ideal places for some of the...
This is, this is something we're going to have to work our way through.
Okay.
There's going to be a lot of discussion about that. And like I said, my first, right now, my problem is, and I'm just one of the commissioners, but my problem right now is, is they've changed the footprint. I don't like it, I don't care for it. Now, maybe it's okay, maybe it ain't. But, you know, I, I want some answers on that. It's one of my primary deals. I think we need to be talking about the non-participating landowners, what their rights are. We need to work on that and, and I'm sure that he is, is very well informed on that as well as maybe the participating landowners. And I don't know whether, you know, Mr. Neal would be involved with, as being a lawyer that would look over some of the participating landowners' contracts and say, "Yeah, this," or I don't know. But anyway, you, as a participating landowner, you have that right. And I think most of you would know that. And again, setbacks. You know, it's, it's going to be a lot about setbacks. Things that we know, number one, we got what they want. Guys, we got the wind and, and we've got it, but we also got what we want. So, there's got to be some negotiation there, right and wrong. And like I said before, change is, is something that's before us all the time. We, we all go through change. You know, I know people that call me and complain because so-and-so moved in down their road and they got seven kids and they're on the road all the time. You know, well, you know, is that a bad change or a good change? I don't know. I don't know. But it's something that, and everybody has this right to, you know, it's their right. So we've got to understand and help with each other and work together, as far as I'm concerned. At this time, I'd like to thank you, Mark, by saying. Gary or Tim, do you have anything that you care to share with us?
The only thing I'd like to say is that, you know, we, Tim and Dennis and I, we represent you guys. And thank you all for being here. I mean, I hope the cows got fed, maybe somebody fed them this morning. But thanks for being here. We need voices. We need opinions, and that's why you guys are here. Thank you for that. And I hate to single people out, but I'm going to. Galen Ackerman, when we got the 300 page of materials from all kinds of other stuff, might have been the time that I got overwhelmed somewhat. And at that point in time, we retained the services of Mr. Neal. And rest assured, he's not only working for Tim and Dennis and I, but for everybody in this county. And his credentials were exactly what I felt like we needed. So he and us will continue to work for health, safety, and welfare of everybody here. And not just in this room, but everybody in the county, so.
Tim?
Well, I'll say, Gary. I have one for Doug, though. You said something about the setbacks, okay? Would you be in, maybe this is not true, but in agreement then, if they came and negotiated with you with a setback payment per se, inside of what we set per se? Say we set it at a half mile. They come to you, and would you be, negotiate 3,500 or 2,000 feet, maybe? I don't know.
You know, like I've said before, there's obviously a number that I would negotiate anything.
But everybody would probably have a number.
Right, right, right. But the short answer to that would be, I wouldn't want anything closer than a half mile. That's what I would stick to. I just really don't see that being...
In the area where then my house would be the livable, nice place to live today, I would have.
Dennis, could I make a question or ask a question? I'm Lynette Strathman. I live north of Burn. Spoke to you this week, and Gary knows me. I've worked for CJ Foods for a lot of years. As far as the point about the setbacks, we just recently, three years ago, built a new home north of Burn, one mile north of Burn, on two miles south of the west end of that string of windmills there. I personally feel like a one-mile setback is the place to start for three reasons. It gives me some negotiating power. I'm not in favor, but NextEra, whoever it is, could come to me and say, would you be interested if we paid you $5,000 a year? Pick a number, I don't care. And if we put one closer than that. Or I would say no. Then if it's really important to them that they put a turbine closer, they could offer to buy my house for a set amount of money. I would again say no because I live on a family farmstead. But at least then, I'm protected within a mile. It doesn't kill their project like I've heard before. They just have to find a way around that, or put them a little farther apart or something, but it protects my investment and my property value. So that's my thoughts on setbacks and support. I have one question about the larger issue, and you've said it several times, and I appreciate that, is this is about the entire county, and nobody wants to do this again in six months. At least, I don't think anybody does in this room. Is it time to consider a wind ordinance or zoning for the county? And I understand no farmer in the county wants to have to ask to build something on their farm. But in essence, by signing these agreements, they're going to have to ask anyway. And we couldn't, couldn't we also do some kind of ordinance that says structures less than 100 foot don't need a building permit? I mean, isn't there a creative way to do zoning that would satisfy everyone and protect us for the years to come? That's my only two comments on it.
Well, after your visit this week, I hit the computer one more time and got into Jackson County zoning. And their 147-page document. And I read a considerable amount of it. When it comes to wind towers, it's pretty vague. I think what they wrote was anything over 150 feet, nothing over 150 feet, you know, and what it was is for my wife and I putting a wind tower outside our house for our own use. That's what I think theirs was negotiated for, what they got. I didn't see anything in their zoning that really, but I'm a lawyer, so I don't know. But I, you know...
Is that something that we could investigate?
And it is. If that's the only way, and that's something that we're working courts to find out, number one, what can protect us down the road. What should we be thinking about? Maybe our wake-up call should have been when Flatwater wanted into Kansas the last time, and it, you know, and it blew by. Sometime we've got to act on them and their intuitions and follow through and see what we got. But either way, the end comes down, we've got what we got, we've got to work with it. We can't go backwards, I don't think, so we're going to have to work from there forward and hopefully come to a situation to where, you know, most of the people are at least halfway satisfied or where they are satisfied. I don't know where they can go. But like I said, we've got people that are, just tickle to death they're here. We've got people that very don't know, and then you've got the people that say, you know, I like the way it is. And I agree. I went out Saturday morning deer hunting and sitting there, you know, in the blind, I was thinking how beautiful it is. You know, you get to watch the squirrels and rabbits and all that, but, so, yeah, I know there's, we all are aware of the good things, and we're going to put some trust in our people that are going to help us, and hopefully we can come to an agreement. You know, I don't know, I still am tossing this thing around about a meeting, whether we should or shouldn't, I don't know. I really still kind of feel like the, you know, word of mouth is good. You know, when you're talking to people, you know, and there's very few people I talk to, whether it's at a wedding or Christmas party or wherever at this time of the year, you know, I mention it. And if they're interested in talking about it, they say something. If they don't, ah, don't bother me, you know, well, let it go. But I'd like to give them the opportunity to go from there. But with that, I don't have any more issues. Do you have a closing, anything?
You know, when you're talking about public meetings and stuff, when you're talking details, the more mouths, details go through, the more confusion there is. I think for consistency's sake, when you reach the point where you've hammered out the details on the term sheet, there needs to be public meetings so everybody's getting the same...
And I'm sure the process will probably be an open meeting type situation.
Dennis, probably just some detailed minute notes pertaining to it in the paper goes a long ways.
Well, we're very lucky. We've got two very good papers in Nima Hau County, and they do a good job of covering our input and our meetings. And so we will definitely try and keep that forward. And like I said, though, you as taxpayers, need to, landowners, non-participating landowners, need to talk to each other. Don't be afraid to ask what somebody is thinking, you know, and if it's totally opposite of what yours is, respect that and go on. You know, we, you can always find out a reason, and I know I've been through it in my own personal experiences with buying and selling. Probably the toughest thing I ever was involved with was, I was the grand knight of the Knights of Columbus here in Seneca when we sold our building down on Main Street. I want to tell you, that was a heartfelt deal when I had to go to people and people then that was 89, 90 years old, and they would tell you how hard they worked to procure that building. You know, and now we're going to just get rid of it, you know, and I mean, it's, you know, it was a hard decision for us to come to and make. We did it. And most of them, I remember one of them after it was all said and done, came and said, you know, Dennis, I was wrong. You know, I couldn't, I can't imagine how, this is so good for Seneca and it's so good for Nima Hau County, you know, I want to make a donation to the building fund. You know, and that did my heart good to know that, you know, even though they were deadly against it, they did come around. So, you know, that's another thing that, armed with the right information, you know, and I agree that we have information that's presented to us that some of you don't get, but not very much. You know, it's just, the only information that we won't share with you is what comes through our private meetings, and so that's as far as we can go.
Dennis, I might add that you as commissioners have the forum, is probably not the right term, to distribute that information, though, in the avenues, whereas my word of mouth, and I agree with Aaron, when it gets one person to another, it gets diluted. And not only that, you know, I don't, honestly, I don't know that I want to put an ad in the paper to invite people to my garage to talk about this, because I don't necessarily want to be on NextEra's radar or...
I understand that. We're going to do our very best, but like I said, right now, we don't have anything that's really set in black and white and it's just information floating around out there in the sky. We need to come down and start our negotiations and go from there. You know, that's my feeling, and I think our feeling. We'll just have to do the best we can to keep you informed. Like I said, we've got two papers that are going to help us, I'm sure, and we've got a radio station that's willing to help us, so we're very good that we have good relations with them, and I think that it'll all work out. But like I said, we're going to have to...
Go ahead, Tim. Galen, you've been taping our meetings during the wind farm. How can people get a hold of that?
Well, a lot of different ways. Do you have a, if the county would be willing to establish a YouTube channel, they could be uploaded to that or something like that?
Because there has been several people that's called me that have watched those, and they really liked them. I mean, that's a way of staying involved without being here.
With your permission or guidance as commissioners, I've got a little YouTube channel that I use for family stuff. I can stick them on there. It'd be better if the county had a channel, but I can do it if need be.
I guess Mr. Neal would put some thoughts on something like that. I mean, anything to get it out into the public's eyes, per se. If it's going to be taped, if you just like a TV station.
That's right. This is a public forum. Anything that's said here is available for the public. If you want to post it on your personal YouTube video, great.
Or the county one.
If the county wants, if the county wants to set up one, there's just going to be someone just, there's no problem at all, A, setting it up, B, conveying information. I think what happens is usually the person who sets it up in smaller communities, five years, that person will leave and no one knows how to run it, and then some hacker gets it and turns it into something weird.
But if it's at least a temporary thing, per se, for all we're doing, this project may help get the word out.
Absolutely.
All right, I, let me just, I'll talk, Mary Kay, can I talk to you about that, and we'll figure something out?
So kind of a question I would have for our new attorney friend. What, has there been anything said today that you find that is a hurdle that is unable to be crossed or...
No, there's not. But that does make me smile. So my grandfather, I was raised in a small town. You always went to see the lawyer, right? Or the banker in town, so that made me smile. No, listen, at some point in time, there will be, you know, terms presented, very similar to what's there. It may be a bit more fleshed out, and, you know, that information will be disseminated. There's going to be individuals that don't like the decibel range we set for a mile out, you know? You can't please everybody. What you're trying to do is reach something that makes good common sense, and it's also doable from the developer's side. Remember, I represent developers. This will be the first time I've ever represented a county. So I am sensitive to that. At the end of the day, they want to make money on the project, right? And Mark didn't pay me to say this, but it's true. There has to be either A, we don't want to do it at all, or B, we have to approach it with enough common sense to find the common ground. So hopefully that answers your question. Okay?
I have one comment for the women. This is difficult, sorry. They were talking about the flickers. We're, you know, like at that mile, pretty close. Yes, you do get flickers at that distance, and no, it's not every day, every night just because of the way the sun is, but there'll be times on my kitchen wall, I have flickers. Clunk, clunk, clunk. So there are flickers. Just those little tiny pointy things.
Tim, to your, honestly, the best way to do the meetings, some counties are doing this, Mary Kay and I have talked a little bit, but some counties are actually using the video of their meetings as the public minutes, if you will. There's a written set of minutes too, but the video's there to watch. The best thing for you to do, instead of depending on me, because I'm going to be gone for several weeks here, is to establish some process by which you have somebody video it and then post it. Instead of depending on me, I don't think it's smart to depend on me.
Sean Lobin would probably be advocating that.
And I think you would have to adopt a resolution saying you're going to begin doing that, and then we could post that on our website or something along those lines?
I will tell you that if you're going to do that, timeliness is crucial. Because the folks want to know, folks are very tuned in, I mean, I'll get requests on my way home from this meeting. I promise you, I will get some texts wondering how soon that video will be up. Like, that's all I got to do. So my point is, it has to be pretty timely because people want fresh information. So when you establish your resolution, make sure that's part of your criteria, your expectation for the provider, whoever that is.
Well, I agree, and I think it needs to be timely. I know our city council has theirs taped, but it's usually in the school board, but by the time it hits the TV, it's two weeks old, three weeks old.
But that's quite a answer.
So that shouldn't be. We need timely, we need to get it done, get it on there, and I have no problem with that. So we'll take that under advisement. We'll work with you, Galen, if you will, as we'll go. And again, you know, I want to thank, and you all need to thank, Galen, Doug, and the committee that he has to help us gather information. You know, just so we're armed with information that we know when we talk to people and when we do things, it's very valuable. Yes, Lynette?
Dennis, will anybody be working with you guys to do the term sheet initially, or will that just be a function of you and the commissioners?
We think, we've talked it out, we're going to talk some more, but we're thinking less is better. And, you know, I kind of agree, either that or we go in there with tape over our mouths and, you know, then it's, I'll be all right. But no, I think, you know, because most of the negotiations are not going to take place, you know, not across the table, they're going to be, you know...
So you're not looking for feedback like from me before you go in there? Or you want me to be silent until you have your initial term sheet?
We're always looking for feedback, we're always looking for feedback, direction and all that. But yes, we're, you know, I think we pretty well know what most of the, you know, people are setting out, and when we come out of our first limitations or, you know, once we come with something concrete, then we can go with something. Right now, it's just, we can talk and talk and talk, and there's no need to dilute it because we all know where we're going, we've all heard it, and we're welcome to continue on, but that's...
And Mr. Nelson's meters running and...
Yeah. Like I said before, I'm...
And we're paying that bill.
I'm not as worried about the monetary part of this, and like I said, we're, we signed a note, and it's a health, welfare, you know, of the county, you know, we want to take care of that, and that's part of our issue. to take care of that, and that's part of our issue. And, you know, once we signed that and agreed to that oath, I think that should say anything about any of us that are in public office. Now, sometimes you wonder, but that's where it is.
Make sure I understand this, Dennis, are you implying that you don't want us all in each of those meetings?
No, you're welcome. If it's an open meeting, you're welcome, absolutely.
I was talking about the negotiations.
No, no, I don't think we're going to have that. No, I really don't. Okay, I don't think any other issues. We're going to go ahead and adjourn the meeting here, we'll move back up to the commission room for a couple of other items, and I thank you all for being here. Don't be afraid to call us if you have any questions.